Good afternoon again and welcome to the January 27th Planning Commission and the City Council. My name is Sina Najjad and I have the honor of chairing the Planning Commission. If you would please call the roll.
Chairman Najjad?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Jabar? Absent. Commissioner Jabea? Absent. Commissioner Javed? Is absent. Commissioner Linton? Is absent. Commissioner Maiken? Absent. Commissioner Noyola?
Here.
Commissioner Senegar?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Sorrell?
Here.
Thank you ma'am. For the members of the commission, the minutes of the last meeting of December 16th was distributed to all. I would entertain the motion to approve and/or hear any proposed modification or changes.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval. I said.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. We're going to get started with PZ 2024345, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Tabitha Haygood of Fitz and Shipman on behalf of property owner Mark Fertitta is seeking approval of a replat of Tuscany Park, Phase 1 and 2, which include all of the common area and all of lots 1, 2, and 3 lying within the Hizakaya Williams Senior League survey into lots 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A, Tuscany Park, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intent is of the replat is to create four lots and to reflect the new development on the property and also to document a recorded access easement throughout the commercial center. Our ordinances state that frontage along an easement is allowable for commercial lots that are within a planned commercial center, where the easement is permanently accessible to the public and designed and constructed and construction of the access improvements are approved by the Planning Commission. The proposed plat meets the city's minimum subdivision requirements. As such, staff recommends approval of the request with the following condition: shall adhere to the utility easement requirements of Center Point Energy to lots 1A, 2A, and 3A. Staff sent out 29 property owner notices, we received two in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is an aerial image of Tuscany Park. And this is the plat. So you can see the darker green is that access easement that's going to be platted. All of that area is improved at this point. And staff does recommend approval, I believe that we have the engineer of record present.
Thank you ma'am. Any questions for the lady? Is the applicant here? The applicant is not here, so we're going to open the floor to public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? No one's volunteering, so we have heard from the staff and there is one condition regarding the utility easement. With that, I would entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I see that the minimum conditions have been met, therefore move for approval with condition number one.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. We're going to go to PZ 2024355.
Zach Rowe of Levin's Engineering and Design requests approval of a preliminary plat for Aurora Estates, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The 14 and 1/2 acre development consists of 13 new residential lots and is located within the residential single-family zoning district. Water and sewer utilities will be provided by replacement and extension of the city's facilities. Additionally, Mr. Rowe is seeking approval of two waivers. The developer requests approval of a waiver to extend the maximum cul-de-sac length from 800 to 1,000 feet. Timber Ridge Lane currently serves three residential properties. The proposed cul-de-sac will add an additional three lots serving a total of six properties and it will enhance the dead-end street to provide adequate emergency service access. The second waiver request is to allow the extension of Timber Ridge Lane to be constructed of asphalt. Timber Ridge Lane is an existing asphalt road. Our city's current standards require new roads to be constructed with pavement, I'm sorry, concrete pavement. The applicant requests approval of this waiver to complete the cul-de-sac using asphalt to maintain consistency. Staff recommends approval of the request with the two waivers with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services. Number two, shall comply with the 2021 International Fire Code by adding hydrants to the new six-inch water line at 500-foot intervals along Timber Ridge Lane. Number three, all development shall comply with the flood damage prevention ordinance. And number four, shall clearly label the responsible party for maintenance of the drainage easements on the final plat to be recorded. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. Aerial image. And this is the plat. We do have, I know for a fact this time, we do have the engineer of record present for this case.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the lady? Mr. Rowe? Now how do you know it was you Rowe and not the other Rowe?
You like the other Mr. Rowe?
No, 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 you're better looking. Go ahead.
Zach Rowe with Levin's Engineering and Design, 3250 East Texas Freeway. I don't have anything really to add, other than I would like to clarify, the existing right-of-way of Timber Ridge Lane is already approximately 900 feet long. We're going to only dedicate additional right-of-way for the cul-de-sac bulb and extend the pavement approximately 200 feet.
Is that agreeable with you?
So is that extending it to 1,100 feet approximately in total?
No, it still is 1,000 feet total. The pavement extension is about 200 feet.
So the reason we're saying 1,000 feet is because Timber Ridge from, I believe that is tram at the very bottom of that page, or this might be a better image, at tram going up Timber Ridge where how it exists is approximately 800 feet and to accommodate for that cul-de-sac is an extra 200 feet. So the measurement of that cul-de-sac goes from the intersection of tram road and Timber Ridge, if that makes sense, for it to be an overall 1,000 feet.
So it needs to be maximum 1,000 feet overall?
It should be, or does it, if you're saying it's 900 feet, which my measurements revealed it to be about 800, but if it's...
I was just trying to clarify, the right-of-way is only being extended for the cul-de-sac bulb. The pavement currently stops short of the existing right-of-way. So the total distance will be 1,000 feet at the end.
All right. Perfect, any other information?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with the four requirements that the city has?
Yes, sir, no objection.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Great folks, we heard from the applicant and also the staff and we cleared the length of the pavement and they are going to go with asphalt to match the existing. With that, I would look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions.
We have a motion to approve with the four conditions, is there a second?
Is that with the waivers as well or without?
With one.
Two waivers.
Is that with the two waivers or without?
With two waivers, yes.
Yes, so we have a motion with two waivers, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Thank you very much folks. At this time, I would ask the Honorable Mayor West to get us started on the joint meeting with the City Council, please.
Welcome everybody.
Mayor West?
Present.
Mayor Potem Neil?
Present.
Councilmember Durio? Is absent. Councilmember Felshaw?
Present.
Councilmember Gads?
Present.
Councilmember Samuel?
Here.
Councilmember Turner? Is absent, thank you.
This is a meeting with four of the both City Council and the Planning Commission. This will be the only opportunity to speak on this island will be today. The Planning Commission will make recommendations to the City Council. The island, I heard they will be on the next available agenda for a decision by the council. And in the council meeting, there will be no company here on these islands. And Chairman, it's back to you.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to get started with PZ 2024373, please.
Good afternoon, commission and council. Mr. Albaran of SDB Development requests approval of a specific use permit to allow a duplex within the residential single-family zoning district located at 5450 Concord Road. In July of 2024, the property was issued a stop work order when an inspection revealed repairs occurred without a permit. It was also revealed the two-story residence was converted into four dwelling units. If approved, this request will allow the property owner to reduce the number of dwelling units from four to two, which would bring the property into compliance with the city's zoning regulations. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, shall obtain all necessary permits and complete all required city inspections. Number two, no permanent structures or appurtenance shall be placed within the easement property. And number three, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements. Staff sent 17 property owner notices, we received zero in favor and two in opposition. Opposition stating multifamily in a single family is unacceptable because noise, garbage containers, it's a matter of safety, parking disabled vehicles, and no front or backyard. The area in red on the screen is the area under review. The site plan. This is the subject property. Properties to the north, to the east, south, and west. And I believe we have the contractor present.
Any questions? So Mr. Albaran is the owner, not the contractor, right?
I believe he's the contractor.
All right, you see the contractor that started the work?
So I think that there is a bit of history on this one. So going back to the subject property, there may have been construction that happened prior to this contractor. However, repairs still happened with this contractor without the benefit of a permit. Same for prior to whoever that was that owned that property. It came to our, it came to our attention that this happened whenever we were doing a city inspection, that they didn't have the proper permitting. And then also it was noticed that there were four dwelling units instead of a maximum of two with a specific use permit. What could be there by right is a single-family home. So that's where they're coming, they're trying to come into compliance with our zoning regulations by reducing the number of units from four, which exist right now, to two.
All right, we'll hear from him. So the applicant is, who's the contractor? Good afternoon, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Eleuterio Albaran. So I am the contractor on there. So like she said before we...
Let me just have your address, please.
3370 Beer Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay, go ahead.
So there was work done prior to me coming in there and also prior to the owners. They bought the property or they got the property back. And some work was done there. But we were there cleaning the property out, the city came by. I went by and pulled all the proper permits after that. There wasn't any work done without any permits and you know, so at least from my standpoint. And I talked to some of the inspectors, we can, you know, we can verify that. All we're trying to do is just get it back to where the new owners can, you know, rent the property out. And if, I don't know if there's pictures from before, how bad this property was before we completely improved, especially on the outside. And that's what, that's what my company did, we did the outside work. We did all the siding, the roof, the painting, things like that. We haven't done any work on the inside. That work was done prior to me coming in. As of now, we're just trying to get it to where it's leasable. And you know, obviously, we will take care of any problems, any permit issues or anything like that. So like I said...
What is your scope of work?
So my scope of work was the siding, the roof. Everything you see on this picture, that's basically what I did, the painting on the outside.
So you did this with a permit?
Yes, yes, I had the inspections as well.
No interior work?
I didn't do, that was prior to me coming in, yes. There is interior work was done there, I don't know who did it. Pretty much, I pulled the permit to do all the outside work. I do have the copies of the permit and the inspection that was done on the outside. Also windstorm certificates that were pulled, that were done by the engineer. So I like to think that I did everything I was supposed to do on that. I think what happened was that it was this, that it wasn't a four-plex. And I wasn't aware of that, that wasn't part of my scope of work to do that.
Did we verify that this work was done under a permit or do you know?
Yeah, so we went out there for an inspection, so I have to imagine that some building permit was pulled. And then at that point, we had, we noticed that this was turned into a four, or this was turned in from a single-family home into four units at some point. But really, this, this case is more so for him to come into compliance with the zoning regulations. And then also there's those, there's those conditions where should any other necessary permits that you have not pulled, those also need to be pulled and that'll be, that'll be fleshed out with the building official.
All right. Tell me, how are you going to make this into two units versus four?
So if you see the small unit and I guess would be to your, on this side over here to my right, that is basically, that's the storage at the moment. Nobody's living there, nothing's been done inside that unit. So we can just close that off or get it away from everything else. There's a small unit in the back. It's just a one, one little room and it has a bathroom in it. We can just close that off and we'll have the two doors right there in the front. One underneath the patio and then one to the right of the patio. One is, that one goes to a stairway that goes upstairs and then we have the one down. And that's how we're going to do that.
I don't think that's going to work. I'd like to see a drawing of some sort because what you're explaining, I'm not sure how you're going to provide safe egress from this house, God forbid there's a fire, I'm not sure how you guys plan on doing that. And I don't think this should be some kind of a Mickey Mouse, I'm going to do this and that. Don't you think we should have some kind of drawing that they're going to take this four-plex into a duplex?
I think what's before y'all is the consideration of increasing the, well, decreasing the density technically, but increasing the density from a, in the residential single-family home district, you can have a single-family home. This is increasing the density to two, which is the maximum that they can have in this zoning district. I think that's the case that's before you guys. For turning or remodeling the four units down to two units, that, that's going to be through the permitting, which is a condition of this case. That's going to be through the permitting process, having to go through the building official to make sure, review those plans, make sure that the engineer has, has done everything that they need to do to sign off on that, make sure that the energy efficiency is there, all those kinds of things. But I think what's before you guys to consider is a increase in density technically. And that, that way they can come into compliance with first step, zoning regulations. Second step will be those conditions of the building permits.
And so we don't have a drawing, we don't need for a drawing until you approve the part. So that was, that's why we haven't had the chance to do that.
So councillor, we, we have a four-plex right now and the zoning says you can only have single. We want to approve a duplex, not worrying about that there's a four-plex and it has to be converted into a duplex, right?
Right, so essentially you are to imagine that that was an empty lot?
Yeah.
And that all the bad things that happened prior to don't exist? And do you want a duplex there? Are you, are you in agreement with adding a duplex there?
Yeah, the only, the difficulty is, is making it into the form of four to a two anyway, but, but okay, I understand.
Yeah, so as a planning manager said, basically the building, if the building official and the city engineer, if they present plans, they obviously have to be approved through that process. So if the plans, as he's presented them, doesn't work and they mark it up and do different, that might be something that goes before a different one, but your job is, do you want a duplex?
All right, thank you very much. All right, so any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We now open the meeting to public opinions. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon to everyone. Thank you for allowing me this time as a neighbor.
Absolutely, if you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record and we'd love to hear from you.
I will do that, sir. My name is Frances Bowman. My address is 5415 Concord Road, Beaumont, Texas, zip is 77708.
Great.
I am here about the subject property that you are seeing on the widescreen. Beautiful place. It shouldn't be there. I live across the street on an acre and a quarter with a one-family home that I've enjoyed for 24, going on 25 years. I'm a native of Beaumont. That home was built for a single family. I have been in that home. There was an elderly lady, her husband was the ex-fire department chief. So she lived alone there with her son. The downstairs was merely for a workshop to build cabinets. There was only one door. If you will notice on the property, which was subject to my coming down here and voicing my opinion concerning the so-called four-plex, duplex, whatever, I sat there and watched the contractors come in. They was bustling and attesting and going about their business. There are four individual mailboxes. So if you've got four individual mailboxes already assigned to that house, what does that tell you? The apartment had two occupants in it and more were coming. I've not been in that house, but one of the occupants told me that there are four apartments in there and they are completed. First of all, anytime I believe, because of my adaptation to laws, rules that must be followed, if you do not follow rules, what happens? You have to pay a price.
Forgive me ma'am, your time is expired, but I would make a motion to allow your visit.
Thank you. Noise and complexes, they shouldn't be in residential areas. As far as being on the right-of-way, I have witnessed the family before this was altered, this house was altered, children playing on a four in the front of their house with four lanes, two going, two coming back. I was frightened. They park on the grass, which does not look good in a residential subdivision. The next thing I looked at was the danger of having this type of building in my community. We all, well, I've been a landlord. And when you have property where people don't know each other, do you think they're going to like each other? No. The fire hazard that that is to my residential property across the street would be imminent to put my house on fire. So commissioners, my request is you do not grant this particular home in that community. I am a taxpayer and I have a home and I want my home and my community safe. Thank you, sir. Sir, I'm 80 years old, I'm a little bit hard of hearing.
I see, you said the house was completed inside?
My house? Yes, yes, it is completed.
You know that's a fact?
Two and a tenant that left, they know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep, my name is Jonathan Finch, I live right across the street, 5525 Concord. Okay, I'm concerned about the electrical. They, if they, I was told that they're not going to put four units, it's going to be reduced down to two units. But right now, I have problems, I'm sharing a transformer with that, that particular unit. And right now, I'm having problems already with, when the air conditioner comes on, my lights go dim. So you put two more units in there with heating, cooking, air conditioning, you know, we're going to put up. But if you can, you know, control that and as far as, those units are done, those are inside and out. So someone did the work on the inside and they bootlegged a lot of that in there. And as of three weeks ago, there was someone living in that little storage place that he, he said it was a storage unit. And also, does that building have a CO to it?
No.
How's people living in it right now?
That's the issue why we're here, they're having to come back and retroactively get their building permits, get their zoning correct.
But how you have people living in there if you don't have a certificate of occupants?
They shouldn't be.
That's all I have, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Sir? You have heard the discussion from the two neighbors that are against this, so you have a chance to rebuttal and tell us what you're going to do to remedy what their problems are.
So I will be more than happy to show these units to y'all so you, so you understand that that unit is not finished on the right. There was a person living there, he wouldn't move out, so we had to evict them on that section. But that's what a story is, if there is one unit, like I said, it's not completed. There's three units that are completed, so I do understand what they're saying. All we can do is... All we can do is, um, follow the follow the rules that they set forth. Uh, we are going to pull the right permits, we are gonna check the electrical. Again, I'm coming in after the fact to some of this, uh, to a lot of this. And so what what my job is to do, I got hired is to get the right permits, get the right situation, uh, taken care of. If there's transformers issue, obviously we can handle that with energy, maybe separate the transformers. Um, the lady that lives across the street from us, um, I don't know how it affects her, other than she doesn't wanna look at it. Um, I I believe we made it into a way better, uh, uh, place than it was before. Um, also, I do think that, um, this benefits the city because obviously the taxes will go up and all the things like that. And there is an apartment complex about two blocks down from there. So that's been there for years and years and years. So and there was a commercial building right next door, there was a hair place. So, you know, there there there's no complaints about that. So I would just, all I can do is tell you that we are gonna fix it the way we're told to fix it. And I will follow this with the city inspectors because that's what my job is, to make sure that they that we have all the, and we do have the electrical, we have the plumbing, we have the HVAC permits, and we also have the, uh, building permits at this point. And again, we they had to stop work and, um, you know, there's nothing I can do right now until I get those, uh, I can tell I get this situation, um, until I get this, a specific use permit done, and then I can move forward on fitting what I need to fit. So that's all I can say, but I appreciate your concern, so thank you.
Move for approval with the, uh, three conditions.
I'd like to ask a question. To Mrs. Bowman, I mean, the two individuals that actually are in opposition. What would it take for this particular building to, you know, to be housed there? I mean, what do you expect the individual, what would you like the individual to do, tear it down? Please. Yes.
Come up to the
I don't know whether engineers can pull my house up on the screen at this time at fifty-four fifteen Concord Road. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I believe it's right around here.
I am so sorry, and I love people and I love to see progress. The area that he's talking about that is empty, the reason they can't bill on it because there was a business there, cars in and out, in and out, and it burned. I know a lot of people here may not know who the Jones brothers were in Beaumont. The home or the house or apartment complex, could he just pick it up, find another lot? And then go with the city where there is, where there are multi-duplex? Pick it up, we residential, single family. I live by myself.
Well, what I was, what I was, I guess, referring to was, um, the fact that what if this guy turned it into a single-family residential structure instead of what it is right now?
That's what we're looking for.
I don't know what the square footage is at this point, but perhaps would that satisfy y'all if it was that type of structure?
Nice, simple.
Perhaps y'all could get together and and discuss this and and and, you know, everybody wins.
Fantastic. All right, let's let's go and then go for another round of vote. I I will look for a motion to approve or deny this.
Make a motion to approve, three conditions.
All right, is there a second? So it fails again, is there a motion to, uh?
Table it.
Well, table is not gonna, we need to give them a direction. Is there a motion to turn this into a single s- single occupancy home?
Yes, I make a motion to turn it into a single family home.
Is there a second?
A second.
Real, real quick, the, so the the item is to, uh, to consider a duplex, so
We need to deny it first.
In order to, uh, follow Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Uh, we, I asked for a motion to to, uh, approve and, uh, there was a motion for approval, it 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 got canceled due to no second, so is there a motion to deny it? You have to deny it to do something else, so somebody.
I make a motion to deny it.
All right, we have a motion to deny, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion to to deny and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any in opposition?
No.
Okay, one no. So now, really, we 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 don't have the authority to suggest to do anything else other than denying it. So he can come back for it with an application to make it into a single, right?
No, well, if it denied, he can have a single-family home by right in that zoning district.
Okay, but I wanna make sure there is one entrance and one exit, right? I don't wanna have four doors to a single-family house.
It would, as long as it meets building codes for a single-family home, that's what we can go by. Um, we'll have to double-check with the building official on how many exits.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry that we have to try your patience, but we have something else on the agenda here before we let you go. Let's see. Other business, impact fee one oh one presentation, who's doing that?
Yes, sir, I'd like to introduce Mr. Grady Reed of HDR, uh, to present the impact fee one oh one presentation. Uh, Mr. Reed has been giving or guiding city staff through the process and possibility of implementing impact fees.
Mr. Reed, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you would please state your name and address and your position.
Uh, my name is Grady Reed, I'm a senior project manager for HDR Engineering, I'm out of the Austin office. Uh, my address is thirty-four seventy FM eleven, FM eleven eighty-five in Lockhart.
And you're representing the firm?
Uh, yes, sir, we we were just, our our firm has been engaged by the city to explore, uh, impact fees. So, um, this is, this is gonna be a very similar presentation to what, uh, we provided to council, um, I believe, last month. So, uh, council members here, I'm gonna try not to bore you again with the same information and maybe provide a few couple of, a couple of other insights. Uh, but we did wanna bring this, uh, to y'all, the the planning commission, because if this moves forward, uh, it is likely that this body in a different name uh, would be, would be involved as we go through the impact fee process. So you can go ahead and go to the first slide. So I'm just gonna kinda start upfront with what is an impact fee for those that that don't know. Um, and and you can see the definition up here, it's it's a one-time payment. Uh, it is levied on new typically or expanded development. And the idea is that, um, as development occurs, new development occurs, whether that's residential or commercial or or in the the city's case for Beaumont industrial development, um, there is infrastructure that has to be, uh, built to to serve that, to serve that new development, whether it's new water lines, new sewer lines, new lift stations, new new water storage facilities, all those types of things. Um, so impact fees came about, uh, they've been around for for several decades at this point. Um, so they they came around to help cities mitigate that cost of development, uh, basically against the the existing ratepayers. So whenever a a city is is building this infrastructure that's related to growth, uh, the city, if we take aside grants and and those types of funding sources and we just look at city-provided funding, there's basically two pots of money that the city can pull from to pay for those, that infrastructure. One is is rate revenue, um, and the other would be impact fee revenue if the city does have impact fees. Um, so again, these these came about, um, to help, especially in these in these fast-growing cities, uh, that, you know, that was occurring in the in the eighties and and early nineties, um, to to kind of limit the impact to existing residents and ratepayers that have been there forever. Because the question, and rightly so, was kind of arising is, hey, we've lived here fifty years, why are we having to pay all this money through our utility rates to fund infrastructure for growth? Um, with all of that said, impact fees, um, are not a perfect panacea for this. And sometimes impact fees are sold on the idea, well, if we enact impact fees, then growth is one hundred percent gonna pay for itself. And and that's just not the case, that's just not the way that it works in the real world. Um, unfortunately, there's a lot of timing issues. Um, impact fees, if the city were to go forward, um, impact fees are typically assessed at time of plat. Um, so anything that has already been platted, you know, prior to this process being finally approved by council, uh, those properties would not be affected, it would just be anything that plats after that effective date of this ordinance should should this go through. Um, and they're typically not collected until the time that the building permit is issued. Um, so there's a lag there, and in some cases, that lag could be years, depending upon how quickly that that, uh, that development occurs and those homes or or whatever's gonna be built there is actually built. However, the city, uh, uh, has to upfront those costs, you know, you have to extend the lines, you have to build, you know, build this infrastructure. And so they're not, uh, so there's there's timing issues there. And in most cases, what's really happening is the money is going out the door for the city to build this infrastructure and then you're kind of, if you wanna think about it, reimbursing yourself um, as the city collects impact fees i- if you have them. Um, again, this 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 would not apply to to any any growth, a- any anything that's already on the ground, any any infrastructures, a- any any, uh, development that's already here. Um, and most, and in most cases, the only time that it would would be if someone were to redevelop their property, for example, and let's say they had a a three-quarter inch water meter. Um, and with this redevelopment, they wanted, they needed to upsize that meter to a to a two-inch meter. Um, in that case, the city could levy the differential impact fee uh, between a a five-eighth inch meter or three-quarter inch meter and a two-inch meter. But for the most part, I wanna just be very clear that if this goes forward, it it would ninety-five percent of the time or even higher would only would only apply to new development. Um, this does not apply to existing existing residents. Uh, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is just the the definition of of what an impact fee is. Um, and again, we'll, we have some slides coming up, um, but this is really just related to new growth and infrastructure related to growth. So and when we get to those slides, I'll talk about what you can and cannot use this, uh, this this money for, I'm gonna go to the next slide.
Could I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
You said it's for new, uh, but changing a water meter from, uh, three-quarter to a one-inch, uh, would remodeling come under the same criteria if somebody wants to remodel their house?
Uh, yes, if 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 they need, if they wanna upsize their meter, um, it it could be. So the way that the way that impact fees are levied, um, you come up with with basically a separate water and a separate wastewater impact fee, and those are levied based on what's called an LUE or a living unit equivalent. Uh, we define an LUE as whatever the standard meter size is. So let's say for the city, that's a five-eighth inch meter. Um, so a five-eighth inch meter would be one LUE. Um, if I constructed something, a commercial business, for example, and I needed a two-inch meter, um, according to the American Water Works Association, you can put about, I believe it's eight times the amount of water through a two-inch meter as you can through a five-eighth inch meter. So a two-inch meter would be eight LUEs. So then whatever these impact fees are, let's say they're combined five thousand dollars for both water and wastewater, just making up numbers, um, then that commercial development would pay eight times five thousand dollars, if if that makes sense. Um, so whatever that's, whatever that gap is between, um, let's say, you know, if they have a three-quarter inch meter and a one-inch meter, that may be two LUEs or or whatever that number is. So the city could levy that that differential on them. Does that answer your question?
No, the question was, is remodeling of a place constitute having to pay the impact fee?
It it could, yes.
That's, uh, okay, thank you.
You can go ahead and go to the next next slide. So, um, I've talked a little bit about some of this. So whenever we go through this process, we would develop a separate water impact fee based upon the the capital improvement plan for for water, uh, and a separate wastewater impact fee based upon the capital improvement plan for wastewater. Now, within that, within those separate impact fees, um, all that this slide is kinda representing is that we do try to go through a process where we build those impact fees uh, and different component pieces. So for example, on on the water, we'll look at a transmission, ground, and elevated storage, pumping, treatment, and supply. Um, and if we have the data available from the city to do that. And the only reason that we do that as part of chapter three ninety-five, there is one sentence in there that basically says that if a developer were to go out and construct an item on your capital improvement list that you use to develop this impact fee, then that developer is due a credit. Um, so just so you're aware, so this is, this is the way that we do that. Chapter three ninety-five said, does not give any direction on how that credit is supposed to be determined. Uh, so we just kinda build these in component pieces as a way to start, uh, with where that credit would would could be determined. For example, they went out and built a a transmission line, um, instead of the city. And go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, so kinda the process that we go through this, um, again, this is, this is really outlined in in chapter three ninety-five. This isn't something that necessarily that's that's unique to to our firm, every firm that would be doing this would be kinda going through and doing this the same the same way. Um, the first thing that we do is we define that impact fee service area. So typically, that would be, um, for example, the city's ETJ, you can levy impact fees beyond the city limits, you can levy them out into the out into the ETJ, uh, as long as water and wastewater service is is provided. Um, you don't have to, um, in other cases, we have limited it to the the impact fee area to the to the water service area and wastewater service service areas defined by CCN. And in some cases, we've done a little bit of hybrid of both. But that would be the first step, is just working with city staff on, okay, looking out ten years, where do we think that we may provide water or wastewater service? And then that becomes our planning area, if you will, uh, for all of our data that we are developing as part of this impact fee process. Um, the first bit of data that we do need is we have to do a land use plan. Um, I'll be perfectly honest and say that we don't really use the land use plan in any way for the impact fee. Um, but the way that chapter three ninety-five was first envisioned is that you would do a land use plan, you would determine a use, water use and wastewater use per acre based on that land use plan, current land use and then anticipated land use in ten years. And you would build your water and wastewater demands off off that land use plan. Uh, we actually build water and wastewater demands off of existing water and wastewater connections and use because that's just most, it's much more reliable, um, than using land use data. But we do have to do a land use plan, and so we will look at current land uses and then But we do have to do a land use plan, and so we will look at current land uses and then what we anticipate land use to be in ten years. Within however we're gonna define this impact fee boundary. Um, next, we do go through that process of of estimating your water and wastewater utility demands. We do have a lot of this data already. Um, and we would forecast those demands uh ten years into the future. We then compare that to your existing capacity for both water and wastewater, again, for each each one of those component pieces. So that just kind of tells us where there are deficits within the system. Um, again, this is something that we have to do according to chapter three ninety-five. Um, and then once we have that, we kind of get into the the heart of the impact fee development. Which is identifying a a capital improvement plan for water and wastewater looking out ten years. Um, it is important to note that impact fees uh or or for this C I P. We are only looking at projects related to growth. Um, those are the only projects that we can roll into the impact fee. So we cannot include rehabilitation projects, um, those types of projects. It has to be new projects that are there. To serve new growth. Um. The other part of an impact fee that you can do, if we have data, is you can take existing assets. Things that have already been constructed, um, if they have excess capacity and we have cost data for them. Uh, which I'm gonna be honest and say sometimes that's hard to get. Is cost data for existing assets, especially things that have been built twenty or thirty years ago. Uh, but if we can't get that data, um, we can roll the cost. Of existing assets that have excess capacity into the impact fee as well. Sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't. Um, it just kind of depends on what the individual city wants to do and and data that we have. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, once we have this uh this capital cost. Uh, what we do through, and we'll be working with the city engineering staff to develop that C I P. Um, we then say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna construct a lot of this, a lot of these assets. We know that we need these over ten years due to growth. But typically, whenever you build something, you're not just building it for the for the demand ten years from now, you're building it for the demand for, you know, twenty or thirty years from now. And so working with city engineering staff, what we would do is for each one of these projects that we would uh that we've identified, both water and wastewater. We would determine, okay, at the end of this ten year period, what is the percent utilization of that project? Um, so maybe we build a project for that's gonna cost a million dollars. And we think, well, at the end of ten years, we're really only gonna be utilizing fifty percent of that project capacity, whatever it happens to be. Um, so then we can only take fifty percent of that project cost and roll that into the impact fee. Uh, so once we've done that, and you know, we've done that for every project, we add up all that cost. We then, the math at that point becomes pretty simple. We just take that cost and we would divide it. By the growth in L U Es projected out over the ten year period. Um, what that number is, that is the weighted cost of existing and new capacity per living unit equivalent. Or if we're really not rolling existing capacity in, and that's just the way to cost a capacity for this new development. That we plan to to build over the ten years. Once we get to that point, um, you basically have two options within the impact fee process. Um, we wanna make sure that we are not double charging new growth. Um, so again, as as people connect to the system, if you have impact fees, they would, they would pay an impact fee. And then they're also gonna start paying utility rates once they connect to the utility system. So the idea here is that we never want to double charge uh customers twice for the same assets. Um, so chapter three ninety-five says that you have one of two options. You can either just take this weighted cost of new capacity per per L U E and you can cut that in half. Um, so you you take your your, whatever your impact fees would be, could be, um, and you you cut that in half. Um, or you can go through this alternative process, which is to look at that growth, make some other assumptions about. How much of these projects we think these new customers are going to pay through their utility rates? And then we can, we can create a rate credit. Um, so from that point, we then take that weighted capacity cost per L U E. And again, we either take that in half, we either cut that in half. Or in most cases, we would do the rate credit option because that's gonna produce a higher potential impact fee for the city. Um, and then that equals the maximum impact fee per L U E that can be uh assessed i- i- if you will. Um, again, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of get into what where y'all would come into play and and what all this means. Uh, but that's, that's kind of our ending number is that maximum impact fee per L U E. I'm gonna go to the next slide. So items that we can pay uh through the fee. So again, this is projects just related to growth. Um, so we cannot take impact fee money and we can't use that to pay for O and M costs associated with running the water and wastewater utility. We can't use it for reconstruction of existing uh infrastructure. We can't use it for maintenance of that infrastructure. It can only be used to pay for new infrastructure related to growth. So with that infrastructure, you can use this, these proceeds to pay for construction, survey and engineering. Financing costs and and also, you know, obviously, engineering and construction costs. Um, if the city were to move forward and go through this process and ultimately adopt impact fees. Once that impact fee revenue comes in, the city is required by chapter three ninety-five to hold those impact fees. In a completely separate fund, um, aside from, that's not part of the O and M fund, so they have to be accounted for separately. Again, just to make sure that we're only spending those funds, that we're not commingling funds. So that we're making sure that we're only spending those impact fee funds on impact fee eligible items. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So things that are not payable by the fee, um, capital improvement projects that are not identified in this, in the in the impact fee C I P. Again, operations maintenance costs, improvements associated with existing deficiencies. This is kind of a, I don't know, if this would be an issue for Beaumont. Um, but you cannot use impact fee proceeds to bring. Existing infrastructure back up to its original capacity. So for example, you had a water treatment plant that you had. Maybe not maintained over the years and and you really couldn't utilize the full capacity of that plant. Um, you cannot use impact fee money to go and rebuild those parts of the plant that you need to rebuild to bring it back up to its existing capacity. Um, you can als- also not use impact fee proceeds to pay for projects that are related to. Uh, new directives either from the state or from or from from federal agencies. So for example, lead and copper rule, if you need to go and and pull outlet service lines or replace those. Um, you cannot use impact fee money to to do that. That has to be borne by the city. Um. You cannot, y- you can use, you can use impact fee proceeds. You can, whenever you bring in this revenue, again, it's gonna go into a separate fund. Um, you can either save that money up and say, you know, you have a a project that's gonna cost two million dollars somewhere down the road. So you can bank that money, let that fund build up over time. And then whenever that, you need to pay for that project, you can pay cash for it. Or you can also take impact fee proceeds into that fund and then you can use impact fee proceeds to pay debt service. On projects that are related to growth. Um, but you cannot use it to pay debt service on non-impact fee projects. And just so everyone is also clear is that school districts are exempt, um, unless they agree to it via contract, which. Honestly, that's never going to occur. Um, you can go to the next, next slide. Um, so before I kind of get into the advisory committee, I guess, can we go back? One more slide. So kind of sticking on this, on the school districts are exempt. Um, I just wanna kind of let y'all know some questions that we've already been asked by by council or staff. And one of the questions that I'm always asked is, well, can we exempt certain properties from from this fee? Um, or certain types of development uh from this fee? And the answer is is yes, but um, you can exempt. Um, some cities have tried to exempt uh either in part or in whole. Impact fees from certain areas of the city if they have a preferred growth zone, for example. Um, or tried to exempt again in part or in whole, uh, certain developments from impact fees if it's, you know, low cost housing or or something like that. Um, so that can be done. And again, we're, I'm, we're getting way ahead of ourselves, but I just kind of wanna give you all some background information. In case you start getting asked questions uh whenever I leave here. Um, how we would typically handle that, though, is we would not codify that in whatever ordinance. The city is going to use to enact these impact fees. And simply because I'm not a lawyer, but it is very hard within an ordinance to codify. Exactly the type of property that you want to give an exemption to or a credit to. Um, and it also becomes much harder to go back and and take that back out of that ordinance. Later on, if council changes their minds on who they want to exempt from this fee. Um, so the way that we have typically handled that in the past is the ordinance would simply just state. Council, um, not the, not the capital improvement advisory committee, but council. Has the discretion to waive in whole or in part, impact fees on a case by case basis. Um, tied to that, though, is anytime you exempt someone from the fee. Then you are basically, in essence, defeating the purpose of having the fee to begin with. Um, so that's revenue that you're not collecting from impact fees if you have them. So that difference then has to be made up through utility rates. Uh, so in order to overcome that, what we would typically recommend is that if, if you were, it would also be included in your ordinance. That if council chooses to waive in part or in whole impact fees for certain developments or certain areas of the city. Um, that the city still has to pay into the impact fee fund, whatever the amount of the impact fees that were waived. And typically, that has to be paid for out of the general fund and not water and wastewater revenue. Because again, that defeats the purpose of impact fees if you're just gonna make the ratepayers pay for what you're waiving. Um, the other question that I typically get asked about impact fees is, does this deter growth? Um, and some people will say, yes, typically, those on the development side will say, well, yes. You know, impact fees, that's gonna increase the cost of homes. And so that's gonna deter growth, especially if your neighbors don't have impact fees. Maybe we're gonna want to develop in these other communities and not these communities that have impact fees. Um, I will tell you, in my experience, I've been doing this for twenty-five years at this point. Um, I have never seen impact fees deter growth in a community. Um, some of the areas that have the highest impact fees in the state, um, also are those areas that are growing the fastest. Um, I like to use the city of New Braunfels, for example, if y'all are familiar with New Braunfels. It's located on I thirty-five. It's in between Austin and San, uh, San San. And San Antonio. Um, New Braunfels has a combined water and wastewater impact fee. That is greater than twenty-five thousand dollars per L U E. It's one of the highest, if not the highest, uh, in the state. Um, New Braunfels also happens to be one of the fastest growing communities in the state and that that area in general. And I, again, I don't wanna, I don't want y'all to say, oh, he's gonna, our impact fees are gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars or not. Um, I'm just kind of using that as an example, is that we see, um, what really drives. Growth within a com- within a community is things like the quality of the schools, other amenities that that community has to offer. Um, whenever you look at impact fees getting tacked on to the cost of a a home, for example. Um, if impact fees are five thousand dollars or four thousand dollars or six thousand dollars. And you take that money and you, you know, mortgage that out over thirty years. Um, it's really, it's, it's, it's just not a factor in in uh in homeowner purchases. Um, it it can be in certain situations for for homes that are selling. Uh, you know, in inexpensive homes that might be, you know, selling for a hundred thousand dollars, but. Um, in typical communities, our homes are selling for two hundred thousand dollars or five hundred thousand dollar homes. Impact fees, just what we have seen is they're not a deterrent uh to growth, both on the residential side and on the commercial side. All right, I'm sorry, I went on and on about that, but I just wanna, kind of wanted to let y'all. Hear my opinion on things because those are the types of questions that you're going to be uh going to be asked. So the advisory committee and really why I'm here today. Um, is that to go through this process, the city would have to create what's called a capital improvement advisory comis- committee or a C I A. Uh, normally, the C I A is the Planning and Zone and Commission. Um, you as the planning and planning committee, planning commission for the city meet all of the requirements. Which is basically that at least there's one person on the P and Z commission that represents real estate development. Or the building industry that is not an employee of a political subdivision or other governmental entity. Uh, we did talk a little bit about, uh, if this fee is levied into the ETJ. And right now, it it would be in places. Um, so what council would do at their next council meetings, should this go forward. Is they would appoint this committee as the C I A C. Um, and then they would add a member who resides within the ETJ. So whenever this committee met as the C I A C, that other member who lives within the ETJ would then join y'all. Uh, for those meetings. You can go to the next slide. So what does the advisory committee have to do? Um, first, you serve as the name suggests in an advisory capacity only. And I wanna be very clear about that. Um, council is the decision makers when it comes to impact fees. Um, the C I A C does serve as in it, in this advisory capacity. Um, you work through the process of developing these impact fees with us. Um, you look at the land use assumptions that we are making. You review the capital improvement plan and make sure that that appears to be reasonable. Um, this committee is supposed to monitor and evaluate the implementation of that capital improvement plan. And then file semi-annual reports to council with respect to the progress of that plan and how these funds are are being spent. Um, the ca- this committee can also recommend to council. Um, when they think an impact fee update is needed. Once the city impact uh adopts impact fees. By state statute, those fees have to be updated at least every five years. Um, you can update them sooner, you can update them every year if you wanted to. Um, you shouldn't do that, but you could if you wanted to. Um, but at a minimum, they have to be updated every five years, or the city through this committee. Has to make a finding that there's no need to update the impact fees. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So again, if this moves forward, um, and council uh establishes a C I A C. Um, the charge to that committee, we we will go through this process of of impact fees with them. Uh, we will prepare a water and wastewater impact fee report. That report will be presented to the committee. Um, and the committee will adopt that report. Uh, when they adopt that report, the committee is basically to make a finding that the land use basis for the C I P appears to be reasonable. That the C I P has been reasonably defined, that the maximum impact fees have been reasonably calculated. And that the result of maximum impact fee is going to be whatever it is that it is going to be. Um, I use the term reasonably several times there. And that's because, uh, obviously, at this point, I I don't know what y'all's backgrounds are. Maybe some of y'all are are land use planning experts. Um, I have had water and wastewater engineers on my. Uh, C I A C committees before, but that's, that's not the norm. And so sometimes when we're presenting, uh, you know, these these engineering, these engineering projects to you and and cost and things like that. Um, unless you're an engineer, that sometimes that can be hard to understand. And so the idea is that we would do the, we will always do the best that we can to make sure that we are educating you as much as we can. Myself and city staff, um, who who again, who we're gonna be relying on for the. The uh, the land use data and the C I P. So that we can educate y'all as much as, as much as we possibly can and have all of your questions answered. So that if this moves forward, when you approve the report, that you feel reasonably that we have, that we have done things. In a, in a reasonable manner. Um, other things can be included in the reports, um, to city council. Again, just because you, as the C I A C, if this moves forward, adopts this report, that doesn't mean that. That now all of a sudden the city has impact fees. Um, it just means that you've adopted the report and that report is now going to go to council for their consideration. Uh, within that report, sometimes uh this committee will want to include recommendations in their report, such as. Hey, we've gone through this process and we recommend that council approve this, the maximum impact fee that this report says that we can do. Um, council will have the option of adopting. If they adopt impact fees, we'll have this maximum impact fee per L U E number that we've determined. Council can adopt an effective impact fee that's anywhere from zero, which sounds strange, but at times that has happened. Where they've said, okay, we wanna have impact fees, but we're gonna set those at at zero. Sounds strange, but at times that has happened where they've said, okay, we wanna have impact fees, but we're gonna set those at, at zero for some period of time. Um, up to whatever that maximum impact fee is that is contained in the report. But council cannot set an impact fee that is higher than that fee. Um, so this committee is, when they adopt this report, they can include recommendations in that, in that report. That we recommend that council adopt the maximum fee, or we recommend that council adopt fifty percent of the maximum fee. What we've also seen is that, uh, committees will recommend that council adopt the, uh. Review the impact fee in three years instead of five years, especially in communities that we're working with that are seeing, uh, really rapid, rapid growth. Or that their C I P is just kinda constantly changing, um, year to year. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, how all this would kinda work out from all the different steps that are involved. Is again, we would work with this advisory committee to adopt the impact fee report. Um, you, a- and make recommendations to council if, if the committee so chooses. Um, since the city currently does not have impact fees, it is a two public hearing process. To adopt impact fees, so once the committee approves this report and we send that report to council, and it is available to the public for review. City council then sets a public hearing date, uh, the first public hearing is just for the land use and the capital improvement plan. That public hearing notice has to go out thirty days prior to having that, that public hearing. Um, city council would then conduct that public hearing on the land use and capital improvement plan. And then basically approve the land use and capital improvement plan that same night. Um, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, and then from there. Uh, council would set a second public hearing, public hearing date, again, provide thirty days notice, uh, for that public hearing. On the actual impact fee adoption, uh, and then council will conduct a public hearing on the impact fee itself. Uh, once council has conducted that second public hearing on impact fee adoption. They can either take action that same night, or they can wait and take action at a later time. Uh, but they must take action within thirty days. Um, so, if they were to take action, then, then they would, they would take action and that ordinance would have an effective date. Uh, for, for, for impact fees to go into effect, which would then apply to any prod- any property that is platted after that date. So the next steps moving forward, um, is if council so chooses. Then they will appoint or, or create this capital improvements advisory committee, which would likely be this committee. Uh, with added representation as needed, primarily just the member from the E T J. Um, our firm has, has already started working with staff, uh, to gather and refine data related primarily to the C I P. Uh, number of connections that are already on the ground and growth and tho- those sorts of things. Uh, we would continue that work, um, we would then present this data likely in, in. Smaller chunks to this committee, uh, to the C I A C. Um, the land use and then capital improvement plan for, for comment and feedback. The draft impact fee report would be created and then presented to this committee as well for approval. And then you can go to the next, and then from that point, that's, that's when the committee's essentially done. With, with this process and then it, it goes to council. Um, so I know that was a lot of information on what's, impact fees are, what they're not. Uh, in the process, but if you have any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
In process of doing this, you had to study the prior year's growth in the city, right?
That is correct.
Uh, looking at the, let's say, last five years' growth, what do you anticipate? The typical fee would be if, if the same growth happens?
Um, I. I'm, I'm hesitant to give you like a, a, a number because we haven't got into those numbers. Um, just in my conversations with staff, looking at, at what we think the C I P is, is going to be. Um, and growth over the next ten years, I don't anticipate a, a, an ab- what I would call an abnormally high. Water and wastewater impact fee coming out of this study. Um, again, these, these impact fees are, are not new, um, that they've been around for, for a while. There are other cities in this area that, that have impact fees, um, Galveston, Alvin. Um, I believe Port Arthur may have them. Um, the typical fee in this area. Uh, Texas City has impact fees, the, the typical fee, what we kinda see in this area for. Cities that are similar in size to Beaumont would range, I would say, anywhere from three thousand dollars per O U E, combined water and wastewater. Up to seven thousand dollars.
So L U E for a house is how many?
Uh, one, e- every, a single family residential is typically gonna be one L U E.
So if there's an office with, uh, twenty people in it and have, uh, let's say eight. Devices, urinals and toilets, what would the L U E be?
Um, it would de- it would depend on their meter size, um, but it would likely be, it could be one and a half to, to two. Uh, L U Es for a typical small office complex.
So three thousand per permit for an office building?
Uh, yes, it would be three thousand dollars per water meter, they're, they're based on water meter size.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, what, uh, how many cities other than the cities that you've mentioned have implemented? Or of similar size to ours have implemented such an impact fee?
Um, I would say mo- most large cities in Texas have, have impact fees at this point. Um, even cities such as, uh, Amarillo and Lubbock. Um, Abilene, San Angelo, and I, I just, I point out those, especially, especially Amarillo and Lubbock. Because the panhandled area of Texas itself is, is not growing, in fact, it's, it's depopulating. Um, except for Amarillo and Lubbock, which are seeing growth. Um, so I would say most cities the size of Beaumont and Texas, regardless of where they're located geographically. Um, do have impact fees in place. Um, many smaller communities, um, also have impact fees, but again, there we. There, it tends to be based on where they're located geographically. Uh, cities in the Dallas, Fort Worth metroplex typically have impact fees. Those cities along the I thirty five growth quarter have impact fees regardless of their size. Um, many smaller cities around the Houston area, um, have impact fees. Um, so it's, it again, it's, 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 for a city the size of Beaumont, it would probably be more. Less likely that you would find a city that doesn't have an impact fee than, than does.
So what's, what's the administrative cost?
Um, again, that's, that's somewhat of a hard question for me to answer outside of doing this study. Um, which the cost of the study would be rolled into the impact fee, so that would be recouped. Um, from an administrative standpoint, from the city, really the only. Uh, other requirements that the city would have to meet again is making sure that they're segregating. This impact fee revenue coming in into separate bank accounts, so there'd be whatever that cost is. Um, you know, auditing that, that fund and just kind of a- a- administering that. But it's their, the administrative costs from the city's side are, are very minimal.
I think his question was, what did it cost to do this study?
Um, from our standpoint, uh, the fee is forty five thousand dollars roughly.
Is that a percentage of anything?
No, it's just what we think it would, it'll take our, our, uh, myself and my associates from our. Our time and, and travel and those types of things to do this process.
Mister Perici, how many houses do we build in Beaumont every year?
Not very many.
And how many office buildings do we mail? This doesn't, this doesn't make sense that he's gonna even pay for the study. But that's, that's just a high.
Well, so, yeah, yeah, so again, I'll, I'll be honest, what, what we see in, in low, in low growth cities. You can certainly make the argument, it, you're always gonna be better off having impact fees versus not having impact fees, uh, in, in my opinion.
I don't think it's much of a cost, buddy.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't take that much to recoup, I mean, if you build twenty houses, you've more than. Recouped the cost of doing this study.
But you gotta pass it on.
Yes, yeah, you have to pass it on.
Pay the, residents have to pay that.
Yes.
Alright, any other questions? Uh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't mean to be. Uh, in my small engineer's mind, it doesn't make sense for a small city like ours, but I'm sure somebody else is. Is confident that it's gonna work, so.
You, you would have, I, I will just say one other comment on that, because this is in my discussions with city staff, is we're not only looking at the residential and commercial development. But potential industrial development, um, as well. And if they put a ten inch meter on there, then that's a couple of million dollars.
That doesn't make sense, the industry is always knocking on our door to get tax abatement, and then on the other side, you wanna raise the meter cost. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that, that would be a city council decision to waive or not waive those impact fees for industrial customers.
Well, I think we have a very sensible council, so I hope that that's, that's gonna be the way. Anyway, uh, is there any comments or questions from the audience? Go ahead, please.
Um, it, it, it is an added cost. Certainly, again, to, to a, a single family residential home, it would, it would be whatever that impact fee is. That cost is gonna get passed on to the, to the homeowner. Um, it does keep water and wastewater rates lower. Now, again, if I'm being completely honest and completely transparent, in a low growth city, like, like city of Beaumont, again, absent. Uh, this fee being levied to, to larger commercial customers or larger industrial customers. You would see an impact on water and wastewater rates being a little bit lower. But it, it, it would be a little bit, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not gonna make a huge difference on, on water and wastewater rates. Um, again, unless, unless growth picks up, um, a- as we move forward. And discussions with his, with city staff, we do certainly understand that growth is on the low side now. Um, I think there's, is a, is a certainly desire to have that growth pick up. Over time and in our, in our rate planning, we are anticipating on the growth rate increasing, say, three, four, or five years out. Um, but the, so there is, there is some benefit, but it does come at a cost.
I have one more question, oh, I'm sorry. Have you surveyed any of the developers in our area about impact statements?
Uh, we, we have not, um, again, I, I will say that any developer that does developments. Uh, o- outside of Beaumont, uh, any, any, any large developers. Um, an impact fee is not a new concept, uh, for them, so these, these, this has been around for, for. Couple of decades at this point, and most cities do have impact fees.
Understood, I was just asking, have you talked to anybody in our area about it?
No, and this could potentially be a new concept for local developers that only do development within the, within the city.
Do you charge the developer, like I just kicked off a subdivision with thirty six lots. And I'm just praying that I can sell those thirty six lots now. But I got thirty six lots that are on the ground right now, am I, will I be charged? I'm not, I'm talking about going forward now, will I be charged an impact fee? Would I start the project? Or, or the individuals who buy the lots from me will be charged an impact fee? Not to get ahead of myself, but city of Galveston or this Oliver or Crystal Beach. Their water department charges a five thousand dollar fee, but it's for a grinder and all that, when you transfer the lot, when you buy the lot from the developer. You have to pay it. My question is, is do you, am I gonna be, is my customer gonna pay this impact fee when they go to build their house? Or am I gonna pay the fee upfront for that customer? So it might be five years before a house gets built out there.
Yeah, so, so typically, impact fees are assessed at time of plat, and they're collected when the building permit is issued. So in most cases. For, for the, let's say, uh, the home, that, so, yeah. That is correct, so it is normally they are assessed when the development first occurs. But it is normally the home builder that pays the impact fees and then passes that cost onto the eventual home buyer.
And in my particular instance, city did not do anything about extending water and sewer to me, at all. It was there, it was adding on, and we took it from there and we've paid everything, the city has not put out a dime yet. So, you're, you were talking about your impact fee and reason for your impact fee, but in this particular case, they haven't done anything. All they're gonna do is reap the benefits, and I'm not complaining, I, I took this thing on and I realized that it's a risk that I took and I'm hoping to make money out of it. But they, and I took it on, and so the city hadn't done anything, and I'm okay with that. You know, but my question's gonna be is, is, there was a subdivision, the gentleman behind me got approved a subdivision. That the city allowed them to put asphalt streets in the city of Beaumont, asphalt streets and open ditches. And I got a hard time with that, cause I'm a developer and I gotta put in concrete streets wherever I go. Now, I'm not gonna complain about my friend behind me and say that was wrong. Are they gonna be charged an impact fee? So the time, I mean, is, are you gonna pick subdivisions? And say, well, this is a low end subdivision, so we can't afford to attack and put an impact fee on that. But here's Mister Perici's building, a hundred fifty thousand dollar lot, he can afford it. Or here's D H Horton, who's gonna go in and buy. Big tr- trying to buy a trick track of land from us to put in a lot of lots. And are they gonna be charged five thousand dollars on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house? That's a lot of money for them to pay, and I, and I know Horton's used to that. But I'm just wondering, is that what's gonna, is that what you're looking at? Five thousand dollar number, you threw it out, and now everybody's gonna stick with that number, but I, I gotta believe, I don't think that number's gonna come. At five thousand dollars, if it does, then we do have a problem, like council's already said. I do believe that our number's gonna be much lower, cause our demand is not there. You mentioned the school system, that's part of the reason why our demand is not there. We got other issues, but that's just one of the many issues.
Yeah, so let me, let me try to answer your, your question and, and parts if I can, and you can tell me if I, if I missed anything. Um, for one, I do understand that now people are gonna take a number and run with it, and. That's why I was very hesitant to give out any number at all, because at this point, we just, we just don't know. And, and even if that number does come out to be, the maximum impact fee comes out to be six thousand dollars, again. Count, I wanna make it very clear that council has the discretion, that doesn't mean that they have to charge that. Um, you know, and, and that's, that's something that council. Um, as far as. Y- your other, your other question was a very good one, and it's something that we get asked a lot, well, hey, I built this new subdivision. And the city didn't have to extend any, any water transmission lines out to me, or wastewater interceptors out to me, so why do I have to pay an impact fee? Um, because as you said, you know, the city didn't do anything to provide me service. And while the city may not have built anything new to provide you service. You are using capacity in a system that the city has paid for. Um, so you are taking up some of that excess capacity, um, that, that is already there, that you are now using for your benefit. Um, and chapter three ninety. Yeah, so, so, so let's take, uh, let's take a, a simple example and say, um, a, a water tower, an elevated water tower. Um, that was built ten years ago, um, so the city is, the city has built that water tower, they've paid for it, they either paid cash for it. Or more than likely, they, they debt financed it, and so they're paying debt service on that water tower year to year. Um, it is likely that that water tower has, that they're not using the full capacity of that water tower. So if you come in, even if it's with ten homes. And, and, and you know, you're using some of the capacity within that, within that water tower. The city has spent funds for your benefit, even if you do not connect to the system. Ten years, until ten years down the road, now, the way.
Pay taxes for, part of what you pay.
So, yeah, so. Yeah, so the, so the water. Yeah, hey, let me, let me answer that, so the, the water tower was not paid for through property taxes. Um, the water tower was likely paid for through water and sewer revenues, in this case, in this.
That's what I just said, you pay a water bill, sewer bill every month.
You do, um. You do, um, and so the idea behind impact fees though, is if we have impact fees. Then when you connect your ten homes, you are then paying for that water tower through impact fees. Again, we would have to go through this process of backing out what we did, what we would expect those new ten homes to pay for through utility rates. So we back out their utility rate piece. Um, and we reduce the impact fees by that amount, so that we're not double charging.
You're buying a lot or a home in Beaumont, Texas. And it's already been there. I paid for the water lines, water lines, I paid for energy to do underground in there, I paid for all the concrete. I paid for all the legal fees, everything else that goes along with. And yet, now I'm supposed to pay another five thousand dollar.
Yes, and and you, and and you are, and and you're correct. No, no one is.
I mean, why, why are you here?
Uh, I believe that this eventually came forward, because one of the things that the city is trying to do, uh, at the same time, is also. lessen water and wastewater utility rates. Um, the city has a lot of projects on their C I P list, most of which are not related to growth. But the city is kind of at a point where they're seeing a lot of money being spent from the water and wastewater utility on rehab.
And they just doubled all the.
Yes, because there are, there are projects that need to be rehabbed, rehabilitated, so on and so forth. So again, it kinda goes back to. Yes, can I, can I finish?
And you always came in under budget, cause the only thing you ever did was fix what broke.
Yes, and and again, lo- lo- and again, it's 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 kind of, at this point, the city is where it is, it's not necessarily.
Alright, gentlemen, thank you, uh, let me ask this, the city council is here, did you guys vote on the fee for this project?
I have one more question.
Okay, how do, how, I'm sorry, how how does, how do these people get hired? Okay, so here's your question. Yeah, but then you have to pay for it, he said that, he said, if you, if you relieve somebody from the payment, you have to pay it, the city has to pay it. He said that at the beginning.
It it is up to the, it is up to the city council, it it would be at the city's council's discretion as to if they wanted to waive impact fees. For certain developments, again, I'm not a lawyer, but even if you waive impact fees for certain developments. You cannot be discriminatory in how you go about doing that, so if what you're describing. Again, I I would assume that that would start raising some, some legal questions. Well, my 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 personal preference is that for cities that have impact fees is that you, you don't waive them for anybody. And you don't have that problem, um, because that's the whole point of putting impact fees in place to begin with.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this? Seriously, I mean, to be fair. Go ahead, well, wait a minute. Alright.
I understand where the city is coming from, I'm not here to say, everybody is going. In order for you to function at at uh, your engineering firm, you have to change your hourly rate every so many years.
I have that, and then in the city, it will do it through their maintenance and their permit fees.
Exactly, and they're doing all that, but I don't think they can raise enough money. To what offset what they think they're gonna spend, now, I just whispered to Richard, I said, Richard, before we make a big. Cool of ourselves, let's just see what the study produces. And is, does the study produce that we ought to be giving them money for developing the property, not taking money from them?
Well, study is not gonna prove anything other than setting your fee. In in my opinion, if if you have a big project, you take it on as a bond, you go to the citizens, you bought on it. Uh, thank you very much, sir, thank you, uh, it was a delight, I appreciate it. Any other comments? Not around this one, what else you wanna say? Okay, thank you, alright, folks, thank you very much, it's four fifty-one. Uh, Mister Mayor, we really appreciate your patience, uh, we're done, so you can send us home.